Here we go.
Anyway.
We'll go out and call the Wilmer City Council Work Session to order for Monday, July 17th. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to make any comments on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go to an update on job descriptions. First, we'll have the building official job description update. Mr. Peterson.
In front of you is a position description as a building official. That position description was changed. It is not.
The building official position description was changed due to some changes to the job The process employed internally is that as jobs change and as duties change, responsibilities increase, we try to make those and make sure that they're reflected in the position descriptions. This particular description had not been changed since, I believe, the year 2000. So it had long overdue. Since that time, the building officials' role in the community has changed significantly in dealing with members of the public, going out and doing community mediation, trying to resolve neighborhood nuisance disputes, those types of things, which were not privately, which were not previously done. The building official has also developed a process within the city's structure where the city is able to review commercial and industrial plans for major public facilities, institutional projects as well. And these are projects that in many other communities, the state requires their own inspectors, their own code people, to review and manage those projects. Because of the expertise and the staffing we have within our department, the state allows the city of Wilmer to do that, so that becomes quite a financial benefit to the city as well. Other minor changes to the position description included the inclusion of rental housing, municipal codes evaluating or enforcing some of the zoning codes. And based on that, the position was rescored using the Hewitt system that the council adopted for position evaluations quite some time ago. The results of that position rescoring showed that it should be in a range nine instead of a range eight. Under the terms of the union contract for the general unit, it states that when that occurs, when there is a change in range, there should be a 4% adjustment to the position pay and its termination of staff, that that position description and range be amended and that the salary be adjusted by the 4% effect of the date the council takes action on the position description and range change.
Thank you, Bruce. I have one question. Under essential functions, it would be the second from the bottom, where it says state provides sprinkler plan review. Have we ever looked at doing our internal sprinkler plan review?
We have, we, I don't believe we have the level of expertise for sprinkler plan review that we did in the past. Our staff could certainly focus on that with some education and training and take that on, but it's something that I don't believe we currently have right now.
Thank you. Counsel? Councilmember Schontis.
I can go along with the recommendation that stated here. I just note that under the administrative assistant position that we're being asked to look at for the police department, there was a salary structure table that was provided and also the number of points changed, and I just found that really useful information. So it'd be nice to see that going forward.
The point change was, I think, eight points is what the position changed, from a 363 to a 371. That was enough to push it into the next range. I apologize for not including that, that range in the steps that are included as part of the union contract. I did not make that part of this council summary.
Additional comments from council? Bruce, are you wishing us to move forward to the regular agenda, to move this through quickly, or is this something we could hold over to the next meeting?
I don't know that there's anything critical about it, Mr. Mayor, but we have been working on this for several months on this process, so I think some, you know, timeliness is warranted.
Thank you. Next, we have an amendment to the police department administrative assistant job description. Chief Felt.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. The item for discussion tonight is the police department administrative assistant job description changes. To keep it as brief as possible here, that job also had not had a formal review for the, in these, in this manner since the year 2000. So over the last 17 years, there were several changes in the police department. Specifically, the areas that impacted our administrative assistant were her involvement in hiring, assigning work, discipline, conducting performance reviews for three staff members. There's a lot of technology-driven type things that have changed in that position in the last 17 years, along with the number of personnel that, that she works with. So therefore, the, the job was rescored and the position went from a pay range six to a pay range seven. And I'd be happy to go over any specifics that you may have.
Council questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Just a question, the last item that you added under essential functions, just a clarification, it says to serve as secretary to the region police chiefs association. Is that a permanent thing that we do, or is that a temporary?
It is, it's been that way for as long as I've been on the department where the Wilmer Police Department as administrative assistant has done that. Typically, those region six chiefs, it's from about a seven or eight county area, have monthly meetings here in Wilmer. And, and she's served as the, or the administrative assistant has served as the main record keeper for that.
So it's a function, it's not an elected, inside the association kind of thing?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Mesky?
I don't have a question about the proposal. I have a question about our own process. Do we have any kind of a policy in place of how frequently we would look at these things, or we just kind of do them as necessary? Because it seems 17 years to review job descriptions seems a little insane.
I believe that's one of the reasons we have our HR director, and I think she's doing a great job of bringing all of our things current, so I commend her for the work that she's done to do that.
Well, absolutely. I'm just wondering, is it appropriate to even have it memorialized? Do we have a plan of how often we are going to do them? Once they're done, you know, I know she's doing a good job now, but are we going to see them reviewed more frequently?
Mr. Holland?
We talked about reviewing them at, in December of each year, just in case there have been changes. If there haven't been, most likely, there won't be every year, but that way, we're keeping up on, on it, so that's our plan.
Councilmember Nelson?
Just a question on the previous one, so it's just a clarification. It felt like some of the things were changed because the person's qualification or had worked its way into the job kind of thing. So the two sides to a job description, does that mean it will be required if that person leaves and we replace? Does this now become a requirement of that job description, or are we merely reviewing the position as it's filled right now?
As it's filled right now. We will, when the position becomes vacant, then we will take a look at what is really required.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
I would just like to talk to the, some of the job description and in favor of increasing it to a seven. Some of the essential functions, I feel like that position has done for a lot of years, but it hasn't been reflected in there. They've always had to supervise and do evals on, on the clerical staff and training in of new employees and, and been involved with all of the confidential things that happen within the department. The other thing, and we've just seen it a little bit lately with the, when we have a change in administrator, like the city administrator, is you don't realize how much that administrative assistant is the conduit that keeps the, every, the consistency within the department. Because I can remember when Mary Davis was the administrative assistant, I think she, I called trained in four chiefs of police. So you're, they're the conduit that keep things flowing, just like our, our city clerk and, and the administrative assistant in, in city offices when we have the change in city administrators. But it, it deserves to be a seven.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering, based on what Julie shared with us, Councilman Osmus shared with us, I was just wondering, should the minimum qualifications be upgraded on that? You know, it says high school degree and post-secondary. Should it be like an associate degree or, or something like that? Or is this a wrong place to ask that question?
I think that we can certainly ask, I mean, this is the time to ask questions if we have it, but one of the things that you'd want to do if you had those concerns would be to talk to the, our HR director about that so that they could address it. I'm guessing that they're not prepared to answer that question tonight, but if they are, they certainly can. And if that would weigh as to whether or not you would, I mean, if you need that information, we want to provide it.
Right, right. I just think as the responsibility increases, probably the educational piece should also be reflected in that. But you can...
And if, if you do that, then you just have to understand it has to be rescored, and then when it gets rescored, it could actually have a different score, because the education is part of the scoring process. So, so that would cause the whole, the whole job description to be reviewed and rescored if you change the educational requirements.
Okay.
I believe I'm correct, am I not?
Thank you.
Chief, Chief Felt, so what I'm hearing you say is the item that Councilmember Nelson brought up, it serves the secretary of the region police chiefs association. That really brings business to Wilmer, and they have their meetings here simply because we have that position. I had that same question that Councilmember Nelson did, and, you know, could it be duties as assigned? But really, this brings, brings business to our local restaurants, because I'm assuming you guys have a meal when you meet?
We do.
So, so that's, that's, that's a good thing for the community?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Next is an amendment to the public works clerk secretary job description. Mr. Christiansen, our public works director.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. In front of you is a third in the series of job description changes, and I won't bore you with all the details. Suffice it to say, the biggest changes on this job description is the title. And back to Councilmember Alvarado's point on the last one is I increased the minimum qualifications to an associate's degree among some other certifications. And I would stand for any questions. It actually, after rescored, it increased from a range four to a range five.
Counsel? Councilmember Schontis?
I had two questions, and they're in regard to the minimum qualifications. I would just hate to see us with a minimum qualification if they don't meet that. We can't, we don't have an opportunity to interview them, and so if it doesn't change the, the grade and such, I noticed we have an IAAP certified administrative professional, so they need to have that International Association of Administrative Professionals certification. And I think of the different positions that I've interviewed for and filled, and that I've never required that. And I don't know how common that is, that professional certification is, and maybe that is more common in, in your work. But I would just, I just want to make sure we weren't adding it and then find that we could not interview someone because they did not have that. And usually, you know, if it's posted for such a short period of time, they may not have an opportunity to receive it before the, the deadline of the application. And then I also wondered if the one-year experience in public works and engineering, I can see where that would certainly be a preferred, and maybe both of those preferred. But are we, again, I don't know how many assistant, how many administrative positions we have in public works. I, again, would hate to have someone not be qualified to interview because they don't have those two pieces.
Councilmember Schontis, I, I'd be willing to put that, I don't, I would rather not downgrade the associate's degree, but I don't think you mentioned that. I would, I'd be willing to do within six months on the IAAP if that's agreeable. And we can put that one-year experience under prefer, under preferred. My, my intent was to, by increasing minimum qualifications, I'm finding it currently with my engineer position that I have open, I actually increase the number of applicants, believe it or not. So I don't want to, I don't want to downgrade the minimums too much, unless we find out that we can't get applicants. But I'd be willing to make those two changes if, if the council would rather.
Councilmember Nelson?
Just a clarification, though, we're changing it for someone that's existing there. So if that position were to open up, you would then review, as we stated before, with the other ones. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We could reevaluate at any given time, as, as Ms. Buckingham said, so.
So this was done based off, from the scoring that you did of the existing person in the job?
That's correct.
Okay. I have one other question. What's above average in clerical bookkeeping work?
I was actually, shouldn't have put the yellow on that. I don't know, to be honest with you.
That's existing, correct?
That is existing.
So above isn't a new word?
The above is a new word, actually.
Okay.
But again, to define average difficulty or above average difficulty, this made it sound like we're getting the smartest people in there, so.
We're all above average.
That's right.
Kirsten Keeler may have something to say about that. So what I'm seeing is that, I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson, do you want another comment? Okay. What I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mesky.
Before you make a big assumption, I want to say, if you've evaluated it and you think these are the minimum qualifications, and you think this is what it takes to do this job, I would say, I would stand behind that. I mean, we don't want to change it to where, you know, we may not get as many applications is a, is a valid argument, but you also want to make sure you get the best, most qualified applicant as well. So we're relying on your expertise to give us what you think is needed for this position, so feel free to, to ponder the ideas before. I don't know if you want to make this a political negotiation piece, because you want to have the best person do the job.
There's been a significant amount of pondering at this point.
Okay. Thank you. So, Ms. Buckingham, we want to move all three of these forward to the council agenda tonight? Okay. So council, if we're willing to do that, we could move those, all, all three of those forward. When I had reviewed the agenda, these were all on the regular consent agenda. I requested Mr. Holland to move those to work session so we could have a conversation about them, but I would like those to move forward if the council's in agreement with that, simply on the timeliness of it to make it happen. So if there's no objection, I would like that to happen on the regular agenda. Not seeing any, so we will move those to the regular agenda. Mr. Holland? Next, we have an amendment to the Wilmer industrial land pricing write-down. Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Kellman, members of the council, this is an issue that has been referred back to the council from a previous discussion. At that point, the council had requested that staff review and offer amendments to the policies based on current activity and also to try to put together some information as to what other communities are doing with regards to land write-downs. And then adding in the business subsidy policy that includes the wage floor that the council has previously adopted, it was suggested that we look at both of these policies in tandem, and I think that's a good idea. We've had pretty substantial demand for new prop, or for properties in the industrial park, and these buyers have wanted to use the land write-down policy. Research turned up only one other city with a write-down policy, and that's the city of Grand Rapids that has established base pricing for their lots and will write them down to 70% or to, they'll write them down by 70%, but then in their policy, they will consider increasing the incentive if the project creates extraordinary economic benefit. I don't know how that's defined. We've also had companies, as they've used these tools, they've had to agree to participate in the business subsidy program. That's a state requirement. If the incentive exceeds a certain threshold, companies are required to enter into a business subsidy agreement. Our current policy calls for a wage floor of $12 per hour. That was last adjusted in 2013. It's a recommendation of staff that the write-down policy be amended to state that the maximum write-down credited to the buyer cannot exceed 50% of the stated price of the property being acquired. Also, that the business subsidy policy wage floor be adjusted to $14 per hour. That being said, Aaron Backman from the EDC is here tonight, and we've had conversations about this, making sure that the EDC had buy-in as what the city staff was recommending. And as I understand it from our correspondence between Aaron and I, the big question is, how do we deal with companies that have already received offers? And it would be the recommendation of staff that we put notes in the file recognizing that we made proposals to these companies prior to the policies being changed, and allow those processes to work themselves out using the existing policy we have now and not reflecting the proposed changes.
Thank you. Counsel? Councilmember Nelson?
When we adjusted the, the salary for the wage floor before, you cited, when we went to $12, you had gotten that statistic from somewhere in the state or somewhere. I'm just wondering how you chose $14.
Communication with other communities of similar size and looking to see what the regional center markets, wage markets are bearing.
Okay. I can be supportive of the $14, but I don't think I can be supportive of the other part of it. I have a concern about, there's a lot of land out there, and yes, we've had activity, but that land and the improvements were paid by local option sales tax. And I think it's our job to fill up the industrial park as fast as we can to get the tax base increase. So I don't like to see us shut down for you to be able to have, to negotiate what you need to do. If 100 jobs are coming and they, if we value those jobs, I don't know why we wouldn't put a limit on the percentage that we'd be willing to write down if it's the right thing to do.
Councilmember Nelson, I can agree with that philosophy. I'm looking at it a little differently internally in that, in order to move to the next phase of development, when this park is full, our determination was that ideally, we would have an industrial development fund that was capitalized with some dollars to go out there and do the next phase, or to complete future projects that would be out in the area of the fifth or sixth phase, possibly some road extensions, possibly a rail spur development, some of those types of things. And traditionally, the industrial development fund has received its revenue from the sale of properties, and that's how we've been able to fund projects in the past. And I, I still think that there's some, some limit. I, I don't know that requiring a company to have some obligation for the real estate is going to be a deterrent. When you look at the size of these projects, the land has not become the major issue and what, you know, we need to help somehow, but I, I personally like to come away with this with some money in the bank when we're done at the end of the day.
So currently, those funds are going into the funds, when we receive funds, where are they going right now?
The industrial development fund.
But what are we using those funds for? Aren't we using those for...
I believe that that is a fund that is just being managed for future economic and industrial development projects.
So what's in that fund right now? How much money?
I have no idea. Do you know, Steve?
So I see that as two different issues, you know, with that? I understand what you're saying, but there's a lot of land in the industrial park. I, I would hate to see us think that we have to slow down development in there for future development, so. I don't support the first part of it. I do support, I can, I can see changing the hourly wage, but I don't support the first part.
Councilmember Palmer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to maybe get Mr. Backman's feedback a little bit, because he's in the industry, he's out searching for manufacturers, industrial, industrial developers, possible developments. What, in terms of land write-down, how does this play into the conversations that you've had in the past? How do you think it will play into conversations in the future? Is this a key component of development and diversification in the industrial sector in Wilmer?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Palmer, it is important, land is an element when we talk with prospects. It can be significant, especially for smaller projects or if they need an extensive area. I would concur with Bruce in terms of if we have existing projects where we have given proposals, not just people that we've talked to. I've, I've shared with him two proposals that are outstanding, both would be sizable developments if we're able to move those forward, and they are offered under the current policy. So I would want to honor those and make sure that they're part of the mix if, as a, as those discussions continue on. Two parts. One is in terms of the wages, I would be comfortable increasing the wage base to $14 an hour. One of the 2017 goals for the EDC was to focus on higher-paying positions, and this falls within that guideline, so I'm comfortable with that. In terms of the other element, of course, naturally, on the 50% proposal, economic developers love to have maximum options, and, and we certainly want to have all the tools within the tool chest, so to speak. Is it possible to have some other percentage, such as 70, 75%? That, that certainly is a possibility. What you're trying to do is anticipate what your financial requirements are going to be three, five, 10 years down the road. We've spent over $3 million developing the latest addition of the industrial park. That's a significant capital investment by the city of Wilmer into, for our future. As I was thinking about this last night, we can't always count on those local option sales tax dollars. They're nice to have, and it would be a great investment, but, you know, those, those dollars are not always easy to come by. As I thought about it, would I love to have maximum latitude on negotiating with projects? Yes. But the reality is that we do need to have funds beyond just administrative and legal. Those are important expenditures when we're, you know, when Bruce is working with a company in terms of land closing, those are costs. But beyond that, let's say we have to reroute Wilmer Avenue, you know, extend it to the west and reroute it back down to 40, trunk highway 40. That would cost some money. And that is, you know, it's something that we're thinking about for potentially a future TED grant. But you have to match that TED grant with local funds. So, you know, it's important to have those capital funds available. So bottom line is that I would be willing to support the proposal of 50% and moving the base wage to 14. I think that it's a balance of, of making sure that we, we get resources that go into the industrial fund, but also realizing that we may not always have certain funds available in terms of local option sales tax. So that's my thought.
Thanks. I'd like to follow up with one more question directed towards Bruce. Is the, is the integral piece of this land write-down policy always jobs created, or have you found other communities that possibly do land write-down based on, say, capital expenditures or something, some other measure of, you know?
Hey, that's a good question. Our policy actually includes both. We allow a write-down for jobs created, and we allow a write-down based on the county assessor's estimate. assessor's estimate of market value of the project upon completion. So we're able to gauge the, not what the developer says they're spending on it, but what the true tax value is reflected back to the community. So we already do that. There are other communities out there that have programs for incentives that are based on a variety of things. Some communities reward developers of manufacturing plants if they build housing. You know, if they agree to purchase a certain amount of product locally and can document that, they will grant incentives based on that. We try to keep our policy pretty simple, pretty clean.
I guess my forethought into that is, okay, thinking way into the future, just as a, you know, hypothetical, you know, say you had a company that was roboticized, for example, and they had very few jobs, you know, actual humans that were going to be on site, but say they were going to build a forty million dollar factory, you know, would the, would the incentive still be there even though there were, there were fewer jobs, but say the, the revenue generated and their capital expenditures was going to be high? I mean, is this, do you weigh one more heavily than the other?
Well, the way the policy reads right now, it, for every position, new position created that exceeds the wage threshold of twelve dollars per hour, and this job has to be created and documented over a period of years. It can't just be hired and fired. They get a ten thousand dollar credit off the purchase price of the property. As far as the development side of things, they get a twenty-five thousand dollar write-down credit for every one million dollars of taxable value that's created. And that's another issue that we could take a look at going forward. Maybe that should be higher for the real estate investment. You know, it's, it seems to have worked pretty well as a blended, as two blended parameters right now, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky, followed by Nelson.
Well, I'm just thinking about what you said with Grand Rapids. I wonder if there's a way to quantify that? And I know you like the policy to be simple. Is there a way to do a, like a graduated scale? You know, where you start with this fifty and twelve dollars and, or, sorry, fourteen? Is there, you know, could it be a sixty at eighteen or a seventy at a twenty, where we're starting to actually say, you know, there's an incentive for bringing in higher-paying jobs? And if you want to roll in with, with Councilmember Plowman's talking about, increased value pieces, so we can kind of lay it out and say, here is the pieces, and if you're going to put a bigger investment with higher-paying jobs, the write-out is going to be better. Maybe that's actually a thing that could attract companies to here going, if I'm going to do the extra piece, maybe there's these pieces that are already sitting out there as incentives. I know it makes the policy more complicated, but is that something that's worth looking into even? I don't know.
I think it, it's worth looking at. Some of the question becomes the reporting, the annual reporting for business subsidies with the state of Minnesota. We have to deal with these companies. They have to provide us with payroll records that show us what their salaries were that they paid these new hires. And if we're going to have it where different jobs create a different level of incentive, it's just more math and more management. It's not impossible. It's just math.
Right. And to me, I mean, the benefit is you're getting a substantial more write-off that I think a business would do that and generate those numbers for you.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Fagerly, followed by Elverado, followed by Christiansen.
I'll be quick. Maybe the reverse side of that, I believe Mr. Bachman at a previous meeting suggested that we not sell all the land for the same price, that there is land that's more valuable out there. And I'm just wondering if we've taken a look at that and how it would relate to the write-down. I really would like to hear some more community input before we make a decision on this, and I'd also like to know what we have in that industrial development fund right now before we do this, because I just think, I, I'd like for us to keep the doors open and to be as competitive as other communities are. And so I like what Councilmember Mesky said about tiering with that. I think maybe we've got some more homework to do to look on that. And I don't know whether you've looked at the value of the land since that statement was made a couple of meetings ago.
Our pricing was based on an analysis by a local appraiser, and it's, again, our industrial market in this area is not very strong. You can't go out in the marketplace and find all sorts of comparable sales. So it was a, rather a blanket approach to valuation that was taken on the park.
But based off from that statement, then doesn't that make this write-down policy the way we have it now more valuable if our industrial land doesn't have the desire that it does in other locations?
As far as an attractant, yes, I'm not sure that it, the differences that I'm talking about are not differences between regional centers. It would be a metro, non-metro difference. I don't think that our level of activity here is different than other regional centers of similar size and function, but it certainly is different than the metropolitan area. And in the metropolitan area, you wouldn't find any of these incentives.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know the Community Development Committee was going to look at it from last year, but all you hear now on the radio is fifteen dollars an hour. And I remember at the committee meetings, you always said, the people that were coming here were paying fifteen dollars an hour plus benefits, so why don't we just go to fifteen dollars an hour?
That's an option the council has. That's absolutely your choice to make in setting policy, Councilmember Fagerly.
And then, as for the option, why not give the people that you've already talked to or Aaron has talked to until the end of the year, the same policy, come the first of the year? The new policy would take effect for them, but otherwise, any new prospects, that new policy would take effect as soon as this is passed. That way you can decide, they can decide if they're really interested in coming to Wilmer or not.
Councilmember Elverado. I'm sorry, have you done?
Yeah, that's fine.
Cut you off again?
I, I like what Councilman Mesky had to say about maybe coming up with a tiered approach or, or something like that to provide some different incentive based on the size of the project. I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like your recommendation, Bruce, and I think it's a step in the right direction. Any company that employs fifty to a hundred people that want to come to Wilmer, I think can afford the property irregardless of the write-down. Some small businesses in Wilmer look at this as corporate welfare. They get all the bonuses and write-down policies and tax abatement, TIF districts. I suspect that the majority of employees in Wilmer are employed by small businesses of ten and less, much more than the major businesses and manufacturers in Wilmer. And we, I'm speaking for, as one of those, I don't like giving things away to have to get people to come here. Wilmer's attractive enough to get, to get companies to come here. And again, I like your idea. I think it's a step in the right direction. And I would suspect, I like Mr. Fagerly's idea of maybe raising it to fifteen dollars an hour, and I like the idea of giving these companies that are on the line or on the hook right now, giving them till the end of the year instead of dragging us along. Again, I think you're going in the right direction.
Councilmember Schwantus.
You know, if one sat in the EDC office, you would find that on occasion, you get a message from the Department of Employment and Economic Development, and you're given a short period of time to put together a package and put together the best deal that you can, and you know that you're competing with other companies, other communities. It is competitive, and they don't have to come to Wilmer. And every community likes to sell the different assets of their community, and they think they're the best place to go. But when the site selector calls or deed sends this out, it is very competitive. And I'd just ask a hypothetical question, and that is, if we had a company come to us and they're going to invest several million dollars in, in new, a new building, and they're going to hundred, hire a hundred new employees, are we going to want to lose them over quibbling about that other fifty percent? Are we going to want to make an exception to keep them here? If we're going to make an exception, then we should write the policy that way to begin with, because exceptions just cause hard feelings about, you gave it to them and not to me. And I would argue that if we look at the industrial park right now and those companies that we have recently located there, they are small businesses. This is a policy that benefits a small business and the big business. So I would recommend that we discard the fifty percent rule, that we move to a minimum wage, wage floor of one and a half times the Minnesota large employer rate. Right now, that rate is nine and a half dollars. The federal minimum rate is seven and a quarter. The state of Minnesota will be assessing the minimum wage rate for both small employers and large employers on an annual basis. If we said we're going to set it at one and a half percent, or one and, one and a half times the Minnesota large employer, it'd be at fourteen twenty-five right now, and we wouldn't have to worry about coming back over time and readjusting it as inflation happens. It would just be a set policy. And then I would also recommend that, I like the idea of honoring those commitments or those conversations that might have taken place already, but I think that we should also put a sunset on it. And knowing that some of those deals can take a period of time, maybe say two years, that those companies have a two-year period of time to put their deal together or they lose that benefit. So it might be an incentive for them. And quite honestly, they can take twelve months, eighteen months, and I would hate to lose a good deal that has already been worked on.
Additional comments? Bruce, I too want to thank you for bringing this back to us. I know we've talked about it a number of times. As Councilmember Fagerly said, you know, I know it was on your plate for things to get done last year. I like the fifteen dollar an hour rate. I also like the sunset. And so we basically have three things on the table. What we have in front of us, what we have as, I believe, the end of this year, so December thirty-one, to sunset into a new policy, anybody that's been talked to having up to two years to do that, the fourteen dollars an hour that's on the table, fourteen twenty-five is what was just suggested, and then the fifteen. And so that's kind of where we're at. So to give staff some direction is that we need to kind of say, okay, how do we want to move this? I also like the idea that was presented of tying it to an outside number, so we don't have to always bring it back. And then that way, we're current, and we're not five years old, and we're not, whatever was nineteen years old, whatever the other policy we looked at. That way it gets current. Councilmember Schwantus or Bruce, do you guys know, does that get adjusted annually?
Yes, it does.
Gets adjusted annually? So that would be something that we could have in the toolbox as well. So what direction are we moving? Are we moving towards the, tying it by, I mean, we're not going to vote here, but is there consensus to tie it to the state? How did you say that?
It is the state large employer rate.
State large employer rate that would be adjusted annually? Is there consensus to do that? Or the fourteen twenty-five, or the fifteen, or leave it at the fourteen if we can have a discussion about that? Give staff some direction. Councilmember Plowman, followed by Nelson.
Yeah, I do, I do still like the idea of a graduated scale for, for capital investment because I think that's a, kind of a key part if you're talking to small businesses versus, you know, potentially large developer from outside of the metro. I think that, that would play a big piece into it. But I think Kathy did hit on a good point, that if we were to tie it to a rate that was set by a body outside of ours, that takes away, you know, the ambiguous nature of choosing these dollar amounts. We don't just have to grab an amount. We can use that as a barometer, and then that's not us setting that dollar amount, so to speak. That's something that can just be in the policy, and it will change as it changes. So I think that's a good idea.
Councilmember Nelson.
I like Kathy's suggestion to use that. I did find in the policy that we were supposed to be revising, reviewing the wage floor every, on a biannual basis. So I think that should perhaps get to change annual. And I don't know when those statistics come out, if there's a good time of the year to review that. But I, I am supportive of what Councilmember Schwantus brought forward. I also like the tiered approach, so maybe we've got some more homework to do before we make a decision.
Councilmember Mesky.
It's just, it's ugly, and it's math, but I heard him say it's just math. But I'm thinking that you probably want to probably come up with some kind of a formula or a spreadsheet that, and I'm, I think the, the minimum wage one and a half per times makes sense. You may want to have a threshold of capital investment. We currently have a million dollars, whatever you want to put in there, and number of employees is in one of the variables we haven't talked about. But if you're going to put skin in the game, I agree, where you want to put your skin in the game may be variable, and then it would give you some other piece. But trying to put the reins on it and, and kind of balancing out the, the corporate welfare concept with the enhancement of economic development is, is what we're trying to do here. But I think if we put together a fair system, and I think a formula might be the way to do it, but I don't have all of the math figured out here. But I think we can address all those variables, and if a company wants to put a hundred employees in at fifteen dollars an hour versus somebody that wants to put thirty employees in at twenty dollars an hour, they can be different. I mean, it depends on what they're going to do for this city. And if they want to put in a twenty million dollar investment versus two, the more skin in the game, I think I'm very comfortable with the more write-down if you're going to have more impact in this community.
Just to be clear, there is no limit on the amount of write-down currently for building value. It's just twenty-five thousand per million dollars of value. So if somebody did five million, they're going to get a hundred twenty-five thousand write-down.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is there's consensus on using the state number, but there's still a desire to do a tiered approach on the salary piece. So if you're going to pay higher dollars, we want that, some type of an equation put together to figure that out. Is that what I'm hearing? Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one question I have left then is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bruce, or not, but was the intent of this, and I don't know if that's the right way to phrase it, but to make it such that it's impossible to get that land written down to free?
No.
I mean, is that what the amendment?
Short answer, yes, because I have a, I'm looking at a broader obligation beyond just the business that we're providing incentives to. I'm keeping the community as a whole in mind and feeling a fiduciary responsibility back to the community to generate something on the cash side of the ledger so that we've got funds available for future investment.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Nelson.
Is it possible, can we, when we, if you come up with a tiered system, could you bring back to us what we have and what we've contributed into that fund with the sales that have gone on out in the industrial park? I think that would be beneficial to know the balance that we have and looking forward with, you know, anticipating what we might want to do next. I think that's something that should fit along with that to know where we're at.
Okay.
Yeah, those, those fund balances will be coming to the council as part of the budget process, but we can certainly pull out the three projects that we've done out there that we've closed on, the sales, and provide information regarding the sales price, the amount of the write-down, what we receive for cash at closing, and, and show the impact on those sales.
But there is a balance in there previous to those two. So what do we currently have? Because what did we spend on there that, the money that the city invested was local option sales tax dollars? So it was paid for by this, by the community already.
That is.
Not, didn't come out of our capital improvement funds.
I do believe that the local option sales tax was sufficient to fund industrial park improvements.
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen, and then I'm going to call again on, on Mr. Bachman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, Bruce, the, these companies that would get their write-down, presently it could be a hundred percent.
it could be 100 percent, are they not also eligible for tax abatement?
Technically, they would be. It's still got to come through the council, and so that's another decision the council would have to make. In the past, dealing with the companies in the industrial park, we have not even thrown out the concept of tax abatement as a tool to use in combination with the land write down. I don't know that the, if we're giving them a land write down so they make an investment to generate property taxes and write off the property taxes, you know, I can't imagine any deal that'd be sweeter than that.
Then maybe that should be part of it, no tax abatement, even with the 50 percent eligibility on that property. I mean, because then we're giving away the house, I mean.
Those are all decisions this council is certainly able to make.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Backman.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do appreciate the suggestion on the kind of a statewide number for wages. The only cautionary note I would say is that if you look at the statewide average or you look at the Twin Cities, typically they're about 15 percent more on average per hour. So I'm a little cautious about pricing ourselves out of the marketplace. That said, it's really kind of a project driven. One of the prospects would be a sizable project that would be tens of millions of dollars if we could pull it off. Well, the land portion of that is a small thing. So do you want to recognize the capital investment that's made on the private side? I think you would. So I would certainly want to encourage private businesses to make that investment, and this is a piece of it in terms of recognizing that capital investment.
And I guess when we talk about the compensation side, I mean, I think any of us can drive First Street, we can drive any of our major streets, we can look at our major employers in town, they've all got, we're hiring signs out there. And so the elevated amount hourly pay is what should be the driving force for this benefit. And I think Mr. Backman talked about that, that the EDC, that's one of their goals for this year is to raise that amount. So I think that we're looking at that. So, and I think that what we've talked about up to this point, we're moving in that direction. And I think, Bruce, you understand what we're asking for. We're asking for the 1425 currently tied to that metro level and then a tiered recommendation coming out of that in addition to the 1425, which is the current number, one and a half times. So the next thing that we've got to talk about is the sunset of the current policy, when it would be adopted. And of course, this will come back to the regular agenda next, in two weeks. But there's one suggestion out there at the end of the year that two council members have spoken in favor of, and then we have another one out there that says within two years. So I think it's semantics at this point, but I think staff needs a clearer direction as to whether is there support for the two years or is there support for the end of the year. One of the things that I would just say on that is that some of these big projects, and we're talking, you know, millions of dollars of investment, to have it at the end of the year, I mean, we're basically five months away, where if we have a longer period of time, it gives them time to get their financing in order, get their ducks in a row. We already know the companies. We don't, but our staff know who the companies are. This may then, within the next two weeks, get other companies come to the table and say, hey, we want to come to Wilmer, we want to be part of this, we want to get our name on the list. But if we have a two-year window, we might have more opportunity for companies to get their name on the list versus we do the end of the year. But council, it's your decision. But we need to get some better direction to staff on that. I don't think there's clear direction, or at least I haven't heard it. Bruce, I don't know if you need clearer direction, or are you okay, or?
I guess I would like to know with a little more certainty, a date that the council looks at. And I would only want the grandfathering clause to apply to the two proposals that are currently out there. Any new proposal that comes in, I think should play with the new policy, whatever that is the council adopts.
I'm hearing consensus on what you said on that. So it's only the two companies that are currently that have contacted Mr. Backman. So that's clear. Now, do you want to do that at the end of this year or do you want to do it in two years? Councilmember Osmus, followed by Nelson, followed by Plowman.
I guess I would take my direction, who you've been negotiating with, you have an idea of whether they can do that in five months or if they're going to need 18 months. I wouldn't want to close the door on them when they only needed two months more if we said, you know, the end of the year. So I would need to hear from you.
My suggestion would be, Mr. Mayor, 12 months.
So you want to throw another number out there? Councilmember Nelson, followed by Plowman.
Just a clarification, you mentioned some projects that you had. Now you're saying there's only two?
No, I was referring to the two projects that have formal proposals submitted to them, and those are the two projects that Aaron's carrying with him tonight.
Okay.
I am dealing with another company that is waiting for the council to make a decision so that they know what to do. And they may be impacted by the new policy. Obviously, any company's going to look more favorably on the old policy if you start putting limits and increasing wage rates and that. But this company has not gotten back to me for a period of about two to two and a half weeks, so I'm not really sure what direction they're going. There was very preliminary discussions with this company. There was nothing, no firm offers made, there was nothing in any, put in writing to this company at all.
I guess the sunset date to me depends on what we come back with, too. So I'd look for you guys' recommendation on that. But I think keeping with the, that we're open for business and we want to deal with it to be, find the best way to do that.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This might be the salesperson in me, but I'm going to throw another fly in the ointment. Because this could potentially, like you alluded to earlier, this could potentially be used as a marketing tool or a way to spur some development if they know that the sunset's coming. What about the idea of, you know, the grandfather clause staying into effect for new projects coming to the table through the end of the year and then the entire program sunsetting 12 months from now? Just throwing it out there. But, you know, knowing for others, looking, you know, looking around, like I said, you know, in my job, if we're looking at our inventory levels and we know that we have a surplus of inventory and we can get that information out to different dealers, they see that as a sale or an investment or, you know, an opportunity to make a move like that. So, but certainly, I don't think a premature sunset, I don't think would work favorably here.
Bruce, you need, I'm sorry, Councilmember Mesky.
We officially have the one-year piece at the table now, but I would absolutely support Mr. Backman's idea of a one-year sunset for the two current projects. And Councilmember Plowman's idea is interesting.
Again, it's only math.
I liked Councilmember Plowman's suggestion.
Yeah, that intrigues me. It would be nice to put out there that Wilmer's open for business and, you know what, we're going to give you an opportunity here to take a look, and then we're going to give you one year from then to close the deal. And it puts some pressure on our development staff and our EDC to get out there and shake the bushes a bit. We certainly can do that, can keep that open for that one year, I'm sorry, till the end of this year. And then the new policy takes effect January 1 of next year, and you have one year to close under that policy if we have a written offer that has been made.
Okay, so you're basically looking for, by the end of this year, a company to have a completed purchase agreement with the negotiated price using the existing policy, but then giving them until next July to actually close on the deal?
December.
Councilmember Plowman, is that what you were saying?
Kind of, partially. Yeah, so using the existing policy as it stands, thoughts, ideas, proposals that would potentially come to the table yet, that could be used as a bargaining chip, so to speak, to get the wheels turning, maybe on, you know, maybe with some companies that we haven't even talked to yet or maybe just kicking tires. And then, yeah, for, you know, talks of, hey, the sunset's coming, you know, but right now, there's still an opportunity to get in on this. I feel like that's a real nice ability to leverage. The EDC can leverage with that, you can leverage with that. It seems, I don't know, it seems like a unique way to do things, but in this day and age, we got to think outside the box, I guess.
Okay, so was my summary correct then? If they commit by the end of the year, they would have, if they commit to doing something by the end of this year, they would have until next July to close on the project or to close on the transaction and still get the current policy incentives?
12 months, so December of 2018.
Aaron suggested in, sign a letter of intent and close by next July, then close within 12 months?
Yeah, that's kind of a lot more along the lines I was thinking, just because, I mean, we know how long, you know, the wheels of government turn slowly and, you know, we meet every other week. And also, these projects, you know, they have their initial soft costs, you know, with design and engineering and all that stuff, and that takes a lot of time. So like I said, to allow the amount of time for this to hopefully work, then yeah, I think, you know, it stretches it out, but it also gives us an opportunity to leverage what we got right now.
Mr. Peterson, what I'm hearing being said is, that's what Councilmember Plowman's talking about, but what I had said is, they would have to make that commitment by the end of this year, 1231 of this year, then they'd have to close by 1231 of 18.
Okay, so they would have 18 months from now then, instead of one year?
Yeah, the wage, the question is, what about the wage? The wage goes into effect at the time that the policy is adopted. And, you know, they would have to decide if they want to go into the current policy or they want to go into the new policy. So if you do a tiered approach, like what Councilmember Plowman had suggested earlier, it may be advantageous for them to say, there's going to be a tiered approach and we're going to be paying our people 20 bucks an hour, we want to go under the new policy, not the old policy. You may have companies that do that. Is that what your suggestion was?
Yeah, if I'm understanding you correctly, yes.
Bruce, are you understanding me? That's the important part, because you're the one that's going to have to write it down.
Yes, we won't know until I get it written, but I believe I do. We're going to have it tiered, and under the current policy, people will have the ability to file their intent prior to the end of this year, close by the end of 18. And if they are going to exceed the current threshold and would meet the new adopted wage threshold, it wouldn't be in their best interest to delay. It would be in their best interest to move forward. So they're going to want to use the new policy anyways.
Yeah, have that, either option. Okay. And then, was I hearing correctly that there is not support for the 50 percent threshold?
I think I need to see what those thresholds are once you put them in a tiered system. For me, I'm hearing two different things, and I think they're dependent on one another. We have a very nice policy to basically add some reins to this and some logical progression. I'm fine if, as long as I know that the current system is going to disappear. How long you want to make that, it's fine, but we need to get to a place that makes sense and gives everybody the same playing field instead of making the deal. I'd like to see that deal defined in some kind of quantitative fashion. So I'd like to see what that's going to look like, too. But knowing that it's going to eventually stop the loose piece and we're going to get to that, I'm happy with that. I don't know about the timeframe, but.
Councilmember Schwantus.
Mr. Mayor, the tiered piece might make sense for the wage, but when we're talking about investment dollars, it's already tiered because it's $25,000 for every million dollars. So if I invest more millions, I'm getting the additional 25,000 for each million. So that, in effect, is really tiered already.
Well, the piece that's missing is, are you going to put a cap on it? Will it reach a threshold? And that's why I'm suggesting that that needs to perhaps be into the actual spreadsheet equation piece. Because I think that was the whole piece of doing it was, we don't want to give property away for free. We were responding to also not just the economic development piece, but a responsibility back to the citizens. So it needs to be both ways.
So if I'm understanding what you're saying, the more someone would invest, the larger the percentages that we would give in land. And then I would say, that is really unfair to your smaller investors because they would not be able to capitalize as, to the same percentage as someone, as a major corporation.
True, but the tax incentive for the city would be much greater. I mean, if you want to, if you want the city to subsidize those pieces, what are you bringing to the city as well? I mean, you have to have, there's multifaceted, that's why it's obviously a complicated issue. But to go radically in one direction doesn't make any sense. It has to be a balance.
Yeah, I think what's being said is that currently, the write down policy does not include the 50 percent. So that was being presented.
Correct, I know, I understand. I need to see what the, what the actual.
The new document.
Absolutely.
And can you give us some example on some example investors, maybe using some current, what we currently had done there so that we can compare those? Of course, all those are about the same dollar amount, aren't they?
The current projects that we have.
Right.
No, they've actually varied quite a bit. On the Magnum project, they received a, I believe it was a 30 million and a half on their investments, so I think it was a $37,500 incentive for the site improvements. And then they received 120 or 140,000 for the 12 or 14 new positions they're going to create. And at closing a few weeks ago, I believe, they handed over a check for 260,000, somewhere right in there. There again, they were buying a big chunk of land, they're buying seven and a half acres, and we sell it by the square foot. So as the acreage needs increase, obviously, the cost increased. So if you've got somebody that can take and shoehorn a major investment onto a small piece of property, that's ideal in my mind, but some of these businesses need a lot of room.
Okay, get something written to us, then we'll look at it for the next meeting. So thank you. Next, we have Mr. Oakland, our finance director, talking about our unexpended capital improvements fund.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and the discussion that just took place, those items will be coming forth in the budgeting process as far as cash balances in that, in that fund. One of the items the council will have to take action on is also paying the Department of Revenue the excess sales tax due to an audit. We've had conversations with them, and we hope to have that closed out by the end of the year as well. So all those numbers, the projects are closed out and should be available and will be coming forth to you during the budget process. With that, staff was asked to update the capital improvement report that we gave you last month. We did up, changed the process a couple different ways. We asked the departments to inform us of projects that they know are completed and final. Those are identified as such on your report. We also went through all of the council official actions. Sometimes there is a delay between when the council authorizes signature of a contract and when the documents actually get signed. So we went back in this report and actually took the official council action, and I believe, I would say, the majority of the contracts have been signed. Sometimes it takes anywhere from two weeks to a month or more for the contractors to get the contract signed back, insurances, all the documents through the attorney and those types of things. So we actually went through all the minutes, all the resolutions. If you look at page 22- actually went through all the minutes, all the resolutions. If you look at page 22 of the 25 in your electronic version, that is basically describing the vehicles. You'll see there that the squad cars have not been purchased. Those probably would not come to the council, other than to inform you that the state contract is being used for those purchases. One of the items on the fire truck, the same thing was, was done there, is that a state contract, and it was a simple motion by the council authorizing that. A resolution was not done. One of the other items that I would like to mention is that there are certain funds that are dedicated funds. On this page, if you'll notice, under the waste treatment plant, those are enterprise funds, and traditionally have gone back to the enterprise of the waste treatment plant, if not used. With that, if there's any questions on that page, otherwise, I'll just move on to the next ones. On page 23, you'll notice that there's a number of finalled-out projects there. The, there are some that have not been started. The one Civic Center Fiber, we have not received any type of official council action or documentation that they've started that. I know that they may be out receiving quotes, but there's been nothing officially signed or forwarded to our office at this point. The other item I'd like to mention on there is the pavement management. That is a placeholder that we put in there at the time of budgeting. In conversations with the Engineering Department, the council has already taken action to dedicate about $3 million of work for this year. Those dollars are not readily available. That's a placeholder that we anticipate using in the upcoming year. It, it's driven a lot by the available revenues that are dedicated for municipal state aid roads, agreements with the utilities, and any kind of dollar amount that the, the mayor will dedicate for payment management. And in 2017, he dedicated 600,000 towards that. So that is primarily a placeholder that is then accounted for when the council approves the street budgets that you have done this year. The rest of the, the page there are projects that have not been initiated yet at this point. One of the items that we do in our budgeting process is, the departments have until July to send their requests in for next year. The process that we handle is that we take through the end of June, because it's a six-month, and not only look at the operating budgets, but we look at their capital request too, and have conversations with the mayor on directions on where he wants to go with available funds that may be left over, or projects that have not been initiated. And we've had some preliminary discussions in that regard at this point. Page 24, you'll see also some projects there. Norris Swanson Concession Building, there's been some costs. That project, in preliminary discussions, may be available for reappropriation, and the charter allows the council to do that. Otherwise, the rest of them that you see there, again, these are obligated and in process, meaning that, example would be the domestic water heater. That's the actual cost for the heater, but not the installation. So there may be additional costs still forthcoming on that. That's why that's not finalled out at this point. Again, if you look at the bottom of that page, the capital allocations for the waste treatment plant, again, are dedicated dollars that traditionally have gone back for the waste treatment plant. So when you look at 5.5 million dollars as being unspent, on the far right of that column, 3.5 million of dollars of that is for the pavement management system, another 700,000 is for the waste treatment plant. And so there is little under a million dollars that would be available, that the council could reappropriate if they chose to reprioritize their projects. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, are there any questions that you have in regards to the document in front of you? Again, I think it's important to understand, as Steve has already said, is that some of these funds, you know, we have some control over, but other funds, we have no control over. And particularly on the wastewater treatment, you know, traditionally, you have put those monies back into that fund to assist with paying the bond payment there. And as you all know, we have a meeting coming up to talk about the Green Lake sanitary system, and, you know, that's gonna be areas that are gonna have to be explored, so...
Mr. Mayor, if I could also add to that, the waste treatment rates are set through 2017, so that discussion will take, be taking place during the budgeting process as well.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Oaklands? Councilmember Nelson.
On page 25, you've got years by them. I'm assuming those are CIP dollars from the years that are listed there?
That's correct.
So the airport that's on there, is that one correct? I thought there were changes to the figures, because those other funds were available.
There has been some action taken by the council in 17 to reallocate those. Those are in my report of last month.
So these shouldn't be on here anymore, should they?
The entire amounts were not re-appropriated. There were just certain amounts. $25,000 of the total was reallocated, Councilmember Nelson. Again, those dollars on the airport, there may be a cost share. And so on the tiling and drainage, the 31,000, that was anticipated to be entirely the city's obligation. The other would have cost share dollars involved.
So does that mean that 25,000 should be listed under the year-to-date obligated in process?
The 25,000, 22,000 of that was reallocated to the City Hall security system, and a little over 3,000 was for a gate at the airport. A gate project where there was a cost share in 17, which had not been appropriated before. That was in the report of last month.
And then, I will continue to remind the council, and Steve and I talked about this this afternoon, but the difference in what we had projected to get for local government aid, and the amount of money that we receive for local government aid, is different. And so it's about 46,000, was that what we said?
In 2017, you're talking about, yes, it's about that much.
So it's about 46,000 that we also have to make up that number. I won't do that again. So...
Mr. Mayor, if I could, that's one of the reasons why timing on the budget process, when we are working on the 18 budget, we do a lot of work in the month of July, simply because we have a first six months of history of where people are at, and, and what dollars are available, possibly in their operating funds. Historically, the council has always, if a project comes up, that's the first place we look, is any excess capital. That process has kind of changed a little bit now with the work session criteria. But then those dollars are, the mayor's informed of those dollars, and it's his choice if he wants to reallocate those in his 18 proposal, or leave them available in case something comes up in 17.
Okay. So with that, with that, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I suspect these people want to speak.
That's where I was headed. Okay. Next, we have the review of the PUD and Seventh Street Southeast Citizens Concern. Mr. Holland, how are we gonna start that?
I think we'll just have Bruce and Sean briefly give an outline, and update the council on some of the regulations and, and guidance that we use here in Wilmer. And then at that time, I would request that the citizens be allowed to come up and speak.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I think what I would do, start off with, and Bruce can fill in as well, as we get going here, is, is kind of read you, number one, the purpose of a planned unit development, PUD, as listed in our planning and zoning ordinances, guidelines, policy, whatever terminology you want to use. It says, purpose. Purpose of a planned unit development is to allow more creative, suitable, and practical uses of land, not possible under individual zoning district regulations. It allows the planning commission flexibility in determining development standards, setbacks, and density for PUDs proposed by developers. So that kind of puts it into a context. It goes into more detail, of course, with almost two pages of, of information. But what that does is it allows flexibility of the developer, the owner, in things of streets, density, sewer and water, parking areas, landscaping, setbacks. For the most part, the whole gamut of design standards that are generally regulated in, in other zones are not in a PUD.
So I think what we'll do, in council, I think in the interest of time, we will call on Mr. Bonowitz, who is asked to, I know he's talked to a number of you, you've received an email from him as well. And Mr. Bonowitz, as you're aware, when we talked on the phone the other day, and I know that you've talked to some of the council members as well, is that, and the reason we had staff go over what a planned unit development was, is because that's what's affect, what's in effect here, is it's a planned unit development, and the developer uses it for a number of different purposes. But one of those purposes is that they can not follow some of the current standards within the city. Although the city engineer does sign off on those plans, it is not built to a city standard on what normal city street would be. So we'll go ahead and let you make your comments.
And the way I view that is, the city took an obligation, took a responsibility at that time, to authorize that be done in that way. I think what's overlooked is that those homeowners change often. There's no sign that says this is a private road. When we purchased our home there, there's nothing to indicate that this road was not to be maintained by the city. Everybody drives there. It's not as if it's some special road that we only come on to. We pay our taxes like everyone else. We drive on other streets in the city that are properly maintained. My understanding was that it was discontinued, the maintenance of it by the city, because of snow plowing. Now, the people who resided there at the beginning said that street was plowed by the city. The minimum road width, I think, is 40 feet. So it's hard for me to understand that a plow couldn't go through. But what we've said is that we would, in perpetuity, if you will, we, the association, would take care of all snow plowing. In fact, I think we wouldn't want the city to plow the snow, because all that does is fill up your driveway after you've had it cleaned, and, and then you're back to trying to break through that hard pack. So we'd rather not do that. We have concerns, as you know, as, as I put in the email, about fire protection, police protection. Are we part of the city, or are we not? We talked about the, the bug spraying, why that bug spraying stopped at the entrance to that. It's only a block-long street. It just befuddles me. We pay taxes like everyone else. What happens if the sewer breaks? What happens if the storm sewer breaks? The water systems, the, you know, how is all that going to be handled? We have concerns about that. And I think it's an obligation of you, as members of this council and mayor, to, to, to take a look at that. You know, are there some options that we could pursue? You know, maybe we take that center island out, if that's a concern. But I think it's important that we know what our, what the city's responsibilities are in that area, for all of those services.
I'll answer a couple of your questions. Do you have police protection? Yes. You have the same police protection anybody else has. Do you have fire protection? Yes. You have the same fire protection anybody else has. Do you have ambulance coverage? Yes, you do. And on the PUD, what happens on the PUD is that some of those rights are given up, so that the developer can either develop more homes, don't have, the developer doesn't have to follow the same standards, but yet, the city engineer does still sign off on it. So I'm gonna have Mr. Peterson talk a little bit about that. But as far as your essential emergency services, yes, you have that.
What about the underground works? What happens if the sewer breaks? What happens if the, the water line breaks? All of those things are concerns of ours.
Certainly. And I'm gonna have Mr. Peterson answer that question for you.
Mayor Kelvin, my response is gonna be a little more substantial than that. First of all, all our private streets in town are signed as such. They have a different color sign on the street sign post, so the private streets are identified. With regard to turnover within the development and people not knowing, any title work is going to show that there is a PUD. In order to get approval from the city for a PUD, they have to provide copies of the declarations or covenants for the homeowners' association. And the homeowners' association is structured so that there is a fee being paid every month or annually by residents of the PUD to fund maintenance and operations within that planned unit development. And you're absolutely correct when you talked about the developer getting more density, being able to sell more lots, increasing profitability, or simply being able to make, do things more affordably. And that's, that's a main reason for, for a PUD, is that the developer can save some of the upfront cost. The homeowners buy into that, knowing what they are getting. A PUD is, is a homeowners' association, and it, it's not a secret. It's in the title work. I'm not aware that that street's ever been plowed by the city. If it was, it was probably a mistake. A PUD really needs to be looked at, or a street within a PUD needs to be looked at as a long, private driveway. And where the water becomes private is when it leaves the main, the right-of-way of the public street, and at that point, it's a large water service that provides branches of service to other property owners. You know, I, I just, the responsibility for these private streets should not be borne by the city, because we've already negotiated that design with the developer. And the, the city, quite frankly, is going to end up with a street that is not comparable to what we would have required had it been a public street. I'd let Sean talk about the other utility issues, and spraying, and those types of things.
Mayor, members of the council, yeah, the only exception to this, in this particular one, is there's an easement, that's a public easement for a public sanitary sewer that runs through there. So the city does maintain that main sanitary sewer line, because it runs from and through another subdivision. So that's the only exception, although in the, in the, back into the policy, it says sewer and water. City sewer and water shall be utilized. All mains and service lines within the PUD shall be considered private. So again, as Bruce said, they're all private, with the one exception in this particular case of the sanitary, because it comes from another, from another and through another subdivision. As far as mosquito spraying, it's been, I have, doing research on that, it's been, sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. I instructed the guys this last time to spray it, because it is only, it's longer than a block, about a block and a half, about 600 feet. So I instructed them to spray that this last time, and so it got sprayed either Wednesday or Thursday. I don't know which night they were in that section of town. Utility services, snow plowing was covered, and signs, oh, the 40-foot ri, 40-foot street, it's not a 40-foot street, it's a 40-foot right-of-way, which again, doesn't meet our current city standards.
And what is the width of the street there, do you know? 32?
No. It's, it's, I didn't measure it. 26, I would say. It's a narrower street.
Thank you. So there's your, there's the answers to the question you asked.
Those are all wonderful comments, but they don't, they don't just rise to the level that we'd like to see. For one thing, there is no sign, no special sign, Bruce. There's a sign that just says dead end. There's a sign that just says dead end. That's all that's ever been there. There is no title work that we see. Definitely, nobody points that out when you purchase a home. You might think so, or they might have been obligated to do that, but they don't. Who does that? Nobody. We are also not collecting fees because we didn't know about that. There is no such thing as a fee, Bruce, that we've been collecting to take care of that. And I think you can make a decision. You have the, the, what is it? I want, you have the right to make a decision. Take a decision for the benefit of the citizens of this city who are paying taxes just like everyone else. It isn't a private street. There are many other cars come on there. And I think you can take a decision to change that. In fact, we're appealing for the other two, if there are two other PUDs. But I would, I would, you know, we strongly request that you take some action on this.
Councilmember Fagerly.
You know, I can listen to all that nice words, but you, at the onset, approved it. You, the city, approved that. There are other issues there with that street. It's not properly structured to allow runoff of the water. Who signed off on that? I didn't. I'm sorry, but I get a little bit emotional about this because I think it's just totally inappropriate and unfair.
Okay. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, I talked with you because you did invite me to your association meeting, and I planned on coming, but I didn't get back in town in time. But I did talk to you the next morning, and then I went in and talked with our administrator, Mr. Holland. And he said, "The city will be spraying for mosquitoes on your street because it is a safety issue." And I just wonder, with Mr. Christensen on street sweeping, we just had the sewer study. Their portion of their property connects with the development to the north. Wouldn't it be?
The sanitary.
Just sanitary? Okay. What about their storm sewer?
Storm actually connects to the right-of-way ditch.
Okay. So it doesn't go into?
That's correct.
It's not included in our study, then?
Well, the citywide as a whole is, is in the study.
Okay. Wouldn't it be to our benefit to street clean that, too? Because you only do it twice a year, basically.
It would be against, it would be the same as, as sweeping private parking lots.
Okay.
And private drives and driveways.
Okay. But I thought it would help for clean water.
Well, it sure would. But we can also, because of the way that's written, we can also require private parking lots to be swept by the owner.
Okay. All right. And then, Mr. Bonowitz, you know, you still get the use of the library, you get the use of all the parks, you have police protection, fire protection, you get the ambulance. You know, you're no different than Kenwood, Par Lane, Terraplane, and Second and Third Avenue, Valley View, Imperial Bay, and Park Place. They're all private roads. And we don't go into the Skylark Mall or Candy Mall to sweep their parking lots?
Well, I'll say this, we feel like, like lesser citizens as a result.
Okay. I'm not sure.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm not sure if you have a loan or anything, but if you would have had a mortgage on it, your title company would have given you all the information on the PUD, because that's required by law. So you would know it's a private property, drive entrance in there? And there used to be a blue sign, street sign.
There hasn't been one.
Well, I've been there since 97. There used to be one there.
Well, there may, used to have been one. There isn't, no.
There are on all these other ones. They're blue signs. That means they're private.
Well, all I'm asking is, you have some authority to take some decisions. And I think it would be wise to think about the citizens, and I think it would be wise to think about solutions to the problem, not just the old no. I think we hear enough of that, no, but there's nothing we can do. There may be a solution if you'll think about it. Let's be a little creative here. That's my feeling.
And property tax, yes, you're, you're paying property taxes, but if you were a standalone, single-family home with a larger lot, you'd be paying more taxes. They built this so you have smaller lots, your taxes are actually lower than a single-family standalone. So, okay.
Okay, okay. So what we're going to do here?
I would just appeal to you to think this through, and, you know, this is one block. What's it really matter to the city? How many streets, how many miles of streets? This is about, as you said, 600 feet? How many miles are there? That's all we're talking about. And, and, you know, everybody wants to pass the buck or say, "We can't do anything." It's no-no situation. I like to bleep, to work on positives. How do you solve a situation, rather than just say no? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holland, if we can write this down as an, as a follow-up item for the council to talk about at a future meeting. And we're about five minutes from our next, Councilmember Mesky.
I just, just something that when we have that conversation, what would it cost to put this 600 feet of road if it were to follow city code? Maybe what it would cost to actually make that what it is? I don't have to answer it now, it'll be part of our conversation, but unless you have an answer.
Before staff takes on that, are you saying you want it put into a typical city street section?
If that's the holding block, I need to compare what it, if you wanted this to be a conforming street to the city. Obviously, it's not.
That's going to put curb and gutter about 10 feet outside their front door, just so that's known going forward.
So the setback would be 10 feet.
Mr. Holland, if we can place this on a future agenda item for further discussion.
Mr. Mayor? We've done that.
We're out of time.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, it wouldn't just be one block we'd be doing. If yours went through, all those developments that Mr. Fagerly listed, they'd all be coming to us, would be setting a precedent. So now we're talking about many, many, many blocks, probably miles. Then we're talking a big increase in, in the city's budget as far as street maintenance, and it's a private street, and it was set up for that strictly to be private so that the developers, the coosemen, could put in small lots, shorter driveways. And yes, your property taxes are a lot less than a single-family home in Wilmer. A lot less.
Okay. We're going to move to the next item on the agenda. Mr. Holland, Mr. Holland, there's a compensation question for Mr. Mike McGuire, who was our interim city administrator. And if you could just quickly go through that so the council can give direction.
Mayor and council, I have an email here that I'm going to read. It's only a couple of sentences, but it's in reference to the interim city administrator, Mike McGuire. And he has a question, and I need some guidance. And I'll tell you why after I read it. He says, "When I was hired as the interim city administrator for the city, it preferred that I be paid weekly amount based upon 30 hours, with the understanding that if it varied from that amount, I would be, it would be considered by the mayor and council. In mid-April, I worked approximately 84 hours for my first seven months. Over the next month, I worked reduced time three of the four weeks, lowering the number of extra hours worked to 44 for the eight months. Therefore, I respectfully request that I be compensated for the additional hours." So basically, he's requesting that the 44 hours that he worked, that he'd be compensated for that. I will tell you that when he signed the addendum for his contract for that additional time, it was with the understanding that there was no guarantee for any additional amounts. Had there been a provision that he could have been entitled to that, we wouldn't be having this discussion. I would just simply authorize the payment and pay the payroll. But that's, that's the, the crux of the matter here, is, does the mayor and the council wish to make a recommendation to pay him for that 44 hours or just stick to the terms of the contract?
And so just for a little background, and we'll carry this over the next, well, I want to resolve this here if we can. When Mr. McGuire did enter into agreement with us prior to the extension, we knew that his hours were over at that time, and it was our intent to keep those hours down. And so you'll recall that he did take greater than, than a week off of vacation, that I told him not to come in for that week, and we're trying to drop those hours. But as the council, you kept putting more and more stuff on his plate. And Mr. McGuire and I were trying to manage his time, but you kept asking him to do more and more stuff. And so, you know, he was, he was kind of caught between two things, where the council's telling me to do something, and Mr. Mayor, you're telling me to take time off. So he took and did this extra work that we asked him to do, and I certainly feel that, you know, we extended his contract, we asked him to do this work. It isn't something that he just manufactured work, it's stuff that he was directed by us to do. So I feel that we have a responsibility to compensate him for that. So the mayor's position is we need to pay this, but it's up to the council as to whether or not we pay it or not. It's not up to the mayor. Councilmember Nelson?
We had the city attorney review the contract and do an extension on the contract, which, in my understanding, would have resolved these hours. So I am curious with why this is coming back after we, I think, at the request of our finance director, had the city attorney do an extension on his contract. So I'm confused.
I don't, I can't explain it any better than I did. I mean, you asked him to do more work, he did more work, he put the time in, and...
I'm not disputing that. We already addressed the fact that we needed to extend his contract so that we could pay him for the work that we asked him to do. So why, why can't we pay him based off from the extension of his contract?
He, he did his best to reduce the number of hours, and, but he was not successful, is what he's saying. And so there was 44 hours that he was not able to eliminate.
And I'm not questioning the hours, I'm questioning the process here. I mean, we went through that we legally had to extend his contract so he could stay and work hours. Why can't we pay him?
Councilmember Mesky, followed by the city attorney.
Good government costs money, bad government costs more. And he, he got us through a very tumultuous time, and I think we owe to, owe him the money that we, the process, I know that's a different story, but I think we need, we should be paying him.
I just want to know why he hasn't been paid.
Absolutely.
Because we did that.
Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I did not look at the contract before coming because I didn't know this was an agenda item, but my recollection and my understanding is the city has paid everything it was entitled or required to pay under the contract. That last amendment was entered with the expectation that the interim administrator would spend more time away from work than he actually did to reduce the overage that he had accrued over the, however many months he was here. So this is a request for an additional payment beyond the continued weekly or monthly salary that was being paid through the end of his employment, to compensate for additional time spent than was originally contemplated.
Councilmember, Councilmember Christensen, followed by Schwantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I deal with contracts all the time, and I stick to them. And I'm going to read you what was, what's in that contract. And it says, "It is understood by employee that additional compensation and compensatory time shall not be allowed for such additional or extraordinary expenditures of time."
Councilmember Schwantus.
We requested the work to be done. He put the time in. I think he deserves to be compensated.
In order to take a vote on this, we're going to have to bring it to the regular meeting, so we'll add it to the agenda for the next meeting. There's not consensus. We're adjourned.
Then we wonder why employees walk out at 4:30 and don't spend an extra minute here.